Every time I look at this is.
No, I had a question on that, so I have information on.
I mean, I've heard what's the noise out there just because of the missing.
Yeah. Yeah, this is the.
She is.
I kind of with the weather.
Special ed is different in February, so.
And I wouldn't blame her.
It'll be plus additional.
Okay.
Um, yep, these are our members in and out as of first semester. We put some that dropped out.
Okay, you ready? Yeah. All right, now we'll call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. There will be two changes in the resignations. We will be removing one of the names out of the resignation. And in the new contracts, we will be removing one name out of there when we get to them. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented with those two changes.
Make motion to do that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented with the two changes I mentioned. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same. Motion carried. Uh, I will now read the five school board basics. Uh, number one, put students first. Number two, follow the law and your own policy. Number three, respect the chain of command. Number four, base decisions on shared objective information. And number five, operate in the public eye. Moving to item three, the consent agenda. Uh, Kendra did hand out a few more bills to look over. So if there are any questions for her?
I had one question about the, um, open enrollment. There's some bills that to approve for our payments for open enrollment. Um, those are for kids that attend, um, other districts that are our resident kids. And then on the other side of that, I've sent out bills for, um, the students that live in other districts which attend the school here. Um, and the total of that is, um, one hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. And those are for regular ed students. Um, the tuition and billing we use for special ed students and that's done in February. Um, so. The first semester are, um, the count of open enrolled in students was thirty-eight point one students. And, um, thirty-eight students out, so it's pretty even. There are some changes because there's been a few that have stopped attending other schools. And, um, we've had a few, since the open enrollment laws have changed and they can do that anytime now, we've had. Um, we have a few more students that are coming in now too. So, um, that number will change a little bit, but that's how the year started.
Any other questions or comments for Kendra? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items. So move.
All right.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carried. Moving on to item four, visitors, public forum. I'm not seeing anybody. We'll move on to administrative reports. Um, we do have the principals that are either working at the wrestling meet or, uh, one is attending his daughter's, um, choir.
Band concert.
Or band concert.
Mm-hmm.
So, do you want to go over any of them or just?
I can try to answer. Just making sure the live stream is working.
Oh.
I can answer questions, um, or pass along questions if you have them.
Did anybody have any questions or comments from the information that was presented? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent, Mr. Craig.
And between what's listed there and, uh, the other things that we have to discuss tonight, I'll have plenty of time to talk, so. Any questions for me?
All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to item C, board committees, policy, finance, and facilities.
Uh, finance committee, excuse me, met Friday, uh, to discuss our, um, the start of negotiations. Excuse me. And also where we're at on the PEPA save, uh, cash flow. And, uh, facilities committee will be meeting, uh, shortly to make recommendations of projects to move forward with. Based on, um, that cash flow worksheet, so, um, that's all that we had this month.
All right. Moving on to item D, recognition of excellence.
And Ava was supposed to be here tonight, but, uh, as, uh, fears grow about weather tonight, uh, she decided to stay home, so. Um, we had several students, uh, selected for Northwest Iowa Core Director Association High School Honor Choir. Caitlin Nobles, Rachel Daigle, Erica Rosenberg, Emma Hombeck, Ashton Gleason, Keaton Crowett, Alan Mahia, and Gabe Dandyhook. We had three students selected for the Northwest Iowa Honor Orchestra Festival. It's a high school festival and, and of course orchestra includes strings, but they also have wind players. And so we have three that were selected from our band, Garrett Atherton, Morgan Hulse, and Aiden DeZao. And then the, uh, South Dakota State University Honor Band, Kyler Schwager, Keaton Crowett. Natalie Weber and Morgan Hulse were all selected to participate. And then the Strong Foundations Honor Band is the honor band Kyle mentioned a little bit ago that Ken's daughter is at. Uh, we had eleven students selected to participate. Uh, they're at Sioux City tonight, uh, and they were J.C. Julius, Emily Lopez Woregui, Aiden Versteg, Ava Hench, Kyler Maxwell. Weston Voss, Julia Wolfswinkle, Harry Ser- Henry Seringer. Emma Bo- Emma Bokey, William Vreeman, and John Leckband. Uh, so congratulations to all of our musicians. First semester honor roll, you can see there, um, that, uh, several students on the honor roll. One hundred and thirty-four at the high school, so that's great to see. At the middle school, seventy-seven of our students were on the first, uh, actually that's the second quarter honor roll. So, and the names are li- are on the attachments listed for you there. So, uh, congratulations to all of our, um, academic success and our music students. And that's all I have for that.
All right, thank you. Moving on to IASB update, um. As you've probably seen, they're advocating heavily, um, at the Capitol for the ESA, against the ESA, not for the ESA, but against the ESA. Uh, vouchers. And I'm sure that will take up a lot of their time. Um, since I'm not on the bird anymore, I know they are actively searching for a new executive director as Lisa Bartusik retires. Um, or is stepping down, retires in, at the end of June, so they are replacing her. So between those two things, I think they're staying pretty busy. If you've got any questions, I can certainly ask those or call down there and get information if you need it, but. Uh, moving on to discuss.
Who voted up winning our, or this, or spot?
I have not heard yet. I don't know if the votes are all in. I have not gotten an email. Normally they send that out, so I'm wondering if they're still counting. Um, there may still be some meetings out there that they haven't voted yet, but I have not heard officially. Oh, wait a minute, did I? Was it the one we approved? I may have to look into that. May have to look into that. All right, uh, number six discussion items, literacy goals presentation.
And Mrs. Schuler is here. Uh, she's our new curriculum lead for the, uh, social studies department, and she's going to be presenting tonight.
I am presenting. At my fan club.
Yes.
I don't know what they're cheering for, but okay. So, yes, um, Ryan was rather busy, so I took this position over for him to relieve some stress on him. So I'm Julie Schuler. I, uh, teach fifth and sixth grade social studies in the middle school. I have been, this is my eighteenth year of teaching at Sibley O'Chedin. Twelve years in the elementary and then six years at the middle school. Yeah, so that was a very good move for me. Not that I didn't like those younger kids, but this is more my, my age group. First year as the curriculum director. So I had, I, I assume that everybody has that presentation or not?
I put it up on the.
Okay, super. So last year, I know our goals were APL. Um, so I just put this bell ringer up there. What was your most memorable experience with a social studies or history class? Laurel's doesn't look that good.
I'm trying to remember.
So I, you know, just, when you ask people, usually their ideas of history classes in high school, not, not such great memories. So I think that our, I call us the social studies history team because in the elementary, we're social studies, high school, it's history. And I think that we all are in agreement that we want to make this, these classes more enjoyable, more meaningful for students. And just, here's some dates, learn them. So, I hope that's what they're doing. Hope that's what they're doing out there. So, we have, we've been communicating mostly this year by email. Because the elementary teachers are, um, getting the language arts, they got new language arts curriculum. So they are spending a lot of energy toward that. And then Ryan, first semester had to teach math, so he was spending a lot of energy on that. So, we basically are keeping the APL strategies, we're trying to in- infuse those. The close reading, those, that's been previous years. Um, and I know the district goal is to read, 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 read. So, history class, that's kind of a natural thing for us. Uh, that, I just said all that. So I asked teachers around the district to tell me what has been happening in their social studies classes. This is the kindergarten teachers and the new reading curriculum. This isn't all their units throughout the year, but these are units that fit both the language arts and the social studies. So they can get both pieces in. And I was very excited to read these because in fifth grade, we talk about, uh, it's U.S. history, like how we became a country. So they've already got a few ideas in the elementary. Uh, we talk, we always talk about saving the earth. So this is a good start for them. So I was, I think they're excited, kind of made their job a little easier to not have to go find stuff, but oh, here, we got it all right here. The first graders, this came from Jessica Stammer. This, they have been doing, uh, an economic unit, goods and services. And she says they're, they're able to state the difference between services and goods and what the world would look like without them. Economics is a core standard that K through high school, and they have a special economics class in high school, so. Starting, starting young there. In second grade, this was also really exciting with their new reading curriculum. They are talking about ancient civilizations, which we do in sixth grade. They're reading stories about that. So, they had done some stories about Mesopotamia and it just happened to match up with when sixth graders were studying Mesopotamia. And we, this is the second year we've done this, had a Mesopotamian fair. And each sixth graders had to create a station, an interactive station. And we invite the fourth graders, but this year we invited the second graders, just because they had studied some of that. They ate that up. They really enjoyed it. This picture here, they have clay, that's how they would, uh, do their writing, their paper wasn't invented yet. So they are marking the letters, writing their name in the clay. All right. In third grade, she said they're studying about communities. And, uh, this was during December when we had all the snow days. She'll see, some classes got ahead, so she threw in an extra unit for them studying the states. And she said they just loved that. And I know in fourth grade, states is a big thing, so those kids will be ready for that. They also, uh, at the end of the year, kind of do a language arts, social studies problems, they, uh, project, they do a wax museum. Students have to pick a biography, they read about that person, and then they have to memorize, I, I don't know, little paragraph. And then they're in the gym and they stand like wax museum and people come by and they have to press their button and then they, they tell those story about their person. So, this is a super old picture, well, not super old, but Tate Marco is in high school. But it still works. Uh, let's see, fourth grade, they were doing an economic unit as well before Christmas. And now they have businesses that the kids run. And I don't know, ki- some kids make bracelets or whatever. And so they got to buy their business license and they're studying about that. And then they can, they have a store and I think they earn some kind of class bucks or something and can shop at the stores. So the, everybody's doing the economic circle there. Fifth and sixth grade, we are studying about Iowa. We're doing our Iowa history unit. The fifth graders, this is a picture from last year, they're building, each fifth grader this year got two or three counties. And they have to do some research and find out about the counties. And then we build this giant map in the hallway. And last year, we didn't get the counties quite in the right spot, but it still worked out. Sixth graders this year, I found this, uh, project called the Iowa Road Trip. And they have to stop in fifteen places across Iowa. And so they have to use a map, they have to figure out their path. I'm not gonna go from the Hawkeye Point down to Keakuck, you know, I better map that out a little bit better. So that, that's been really fun. And they're coming up with things in Iowa I didn't even know existed. So, and then we did have some kids who thought at the end of the year, we were like going to go on the road trip. Said, well, you can have to do that with your parents.
Talk to your parents.
We can't be gone that long. Ryan, um, I know he has been wanting to read a novel with his classes. And so last year, he took the dive and he, he did this with the seventh grade. And he read this book with them called Refugee as part of the immigration unit. And it, it went super, the kids really, really enjoyed that. So I don't know if he'll do it this year because of the whole math thing, but he's gonna start one for eighth grade, do the same thing. And then, um, Rebecca Fink in high school, the economics class, she has been hosting speakers, business leaders of our community. To come in and speak to the class about insurance and tax type of items. So I think that's interesting, maybe not the subject matter, but, you know, that the people are coming in and.
Well, and you've done something similar.
I did, uh, so eighth hour for fifth and sixth graders, if they're not in band and or choir. Or have some kind of math or reading intervention. We just really don't have anywhere to go with them, so Kate Wedges brings them up to the STEM room, she's got a class. We have one class of a study hall and then I do different things. And on Wednesday for the first semester, I invited speakers to come in and just talk about whatever. And we had all kinds, people talked about their jobs, um, uh, I forget her name, Bosma, Mrs. Bosma. From O'Chedin has a kaleidoscope.
Oh, look.
Collection, Ladonna, yes. She came in, she didn't bring them all, she said she couldn't do that. And they, the kids just had so many great questions. I had about a half a dozen former SO students come in and talk about their path from high school to what they're doing now. And that, all of them totally different, totally inspirational. And I think kids really enjoyed that, just hearing like, oh, there is life after school. You're not gonna die here in school. So, I don't, do you have any questions? Thank you for your support for the social sciences. Kind of, not that we're overlooked, but we're not, you know, kids aren't tested on it, so sometimes it's important. Gets a little far down the ladder.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Great activities.
Thank you. We, I think we all enjoy what we do.
And thank you for what you do for kids at Sibley O'Chedin.
Thank you.
All right, item B, making up missed time due to inclement weather.
Okay, um, so I wanna get, uh, okay. Um, grab a couple of pieces of data here for you. The first is our actual count. Um, so to go over a couple of regulations, we are, um, built on an hours calendar. So we have a lot more flexibility than if we were on a days calendar. However, we've missed enough hours that we're talking about days of time that we need to make up. So on the left-hand side is all the snow days that we had. Um, you can see that some of the snow days are a full six and a half hours. A full day is six and a half hours and not eight hours because we don't count lunch. So, we take an hour and a half out of the middle of the day. Um, we had the two hour early out, so that's only two hours. Later on down the line, you see a one-thirty dismissal, that's only four and a half hours because we got out two hours early. So, currently, we have a total number of hours of fifty-seven and a half to make up. Now, anything below one thousand eighty, which is the state minimum for compulsory attendance, you are required to make up, that's twelve and a half. So that's just under two days that we're required to make up no matter what. Your decision comes up on the forty-five hours between the compulsory minimum and where we started at eleven hundred twenty-five for the year. So, one of the questions that as, as we move forward, we need to, we need to, I need some direction on is how much of that time do you want to make sure we make up? And the initial answer may be all of it because we don't want our kids to miss out on any of the days. The other part of that is, is we look at the calendar and what's feasible and how long we wanna keep them here. Those kind of things have to, um, factor into the conversation as well, just to make sure everybody's thinking about all the different parts. So fifty-seven and a half hours that we have to make up. If we make up all nine days, and I'm gonna pull our calendar over here. If you look at the bottom here in May, the last day is supposed to be this purple day, May eighteenth. So if we make up all nine days at the end, you, the students would get out May thirty-first. And the teachers would have their last PD day on June first. Something else to consider is that the staff members, or the teachers, I should say, have a hundred and eighty, or a hundred and ninety day contract. So if we make up all the time and it takes nine days to do that, they're not gonna have any extra make-up days because those are student contact days they have to, they have to do. So then they would be even. Um, if we, uh, don't have the students make up all of those days, then the teachers would have staff day, would have, uh, contract days to make up. You also have days that are in the calendar and, and, uh, we're a little, um. We're a little pressed to consider President's Day. Um, which is the, uh, twentieth of. Whoops, February, I'm, I'm gonna watch. There, the February twentieth is pink day here. We've already moved our board meeting to the thirteenth, so if we wanted to use February twentieth, you could still approve that at the February thirteenth meeting and we would have time to do that. All of the things that we talk about tonight are going to go into consideration on a survey for parents and, and the community and the staff members. So we're gonna send all that information out and ask for as much input as we can get back, try to craft a couple of ideas. Okay, here, these things address people's concerns. Then we'll send them out so that the public knows that we are considering what changes we're considering. And then at the February thirteenth board meeting, um, before the board meeting, there will be a public hearing. So anytime you make changes to the calendar, you have to have a public hearing to approve them. So we'll have the public hearing on February thirteenth prior to our regular board meeting. If anybody wants to give commentary at that point, they can, and then we would consider what we wanna do for the calendar. Um, so I guess I, I need, is there? I guess what I need from you is what, what as a group you want to make sure is in those options that we send out to people. So I'll put it back down to May there and blow it up a little bit so you can see.
What would happen, or is it even possible, James, to use those Wednesday early out hours? I know that's when our mentoring, would that hit that too hard? Would we have enough subs, would we? Or would it even be feasible?
Well, it would be feasible. So, so each day that we get out is a one hour early out. So that would make up one hour for students. Problem is, that doesn't make up an hour for teachers. So if we wanted to help teachers make up that time, you would want to start professional development at three-thirty, run it to four-thirty so that you get an extra half hour. And then count those as staff make-up days too. So it would, it would force teachers to stay a half hour longer.
Instead of tacking it up.
Now, you don't have to do those things together. They can still make up that time at the end of the year, but it would, that would give you an option to get them done earlier as well. So yes, that is definitely an option. And just to throw out so that there are, I mean, how much flexibility we have, we can go on weekends. Nobody's gonna like that idea and I'm not, I'm, I'm not encouraging it, but you know, that's, that's something that could be done. With, I don't believe we can use, um, in April, the Friday and Monday around Easter because those are in the contract. Um, so we have to leave those. Other than that, there really isn't much more except the Friday of conferences. Um, the seventeenth here that we can make up a day. But that's gonna be, that's gonna be a long week for everybody with conferences till eight o'clock Monday and Tuesday and then to make up a day. So if you, if you went through and approved changes to do that, you'd have two, six, nine. You'd have nine hours of, um, student time. And, uh, four and a half hours of teacher time. Um, so that leaves you with forty-eight and a half hours of student time. Uh, and that. That leaves you seven and a, it'll take seven and a half days to get all that time in. So it doesn't make a, a huge impact, but it makes an impact. And the thing is, at that point, now, what you might, what you might consider at seven and a half, you'd be the nineteenth, the twenty-sixth, the twenty-ninth, and the thirtieth. So you might waive the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth and be done on the twenty-sixth, then the teachers come back on the twenty-ninth. Idea. And then the teachers would have a couple of extra days, but then everybody's still done by June first.
Memorial Day's in June?
Oh, Memorial Day is in May, yeah. I don't mark Memorial Day on this because we don't get there.
I don't know what it is.
No, it is the twenty-ninth, it's the last Monday, right? So, um, you would have June first as the, you'd be waiving the thirtieth and thirty-first for the kids. Um, but the teachers could come in there and count those days still. If they needed.
So, tonight, is all you're looking for is guidance as far as how much time?
Yeah, that's, that's an important part of it because if we're gonna do, um, if we're gonna do all of it, we have to fit it in. And so, now, with Laurel's idea of taking the, the early outs on Wednesdays and using those, um, as well as, uh, the time for the teachers, then, um, that reduces everybody's obligation at the end.
And does that work with mentoring?
Well, it'll have to. I mean, they'll have, they'll have an hour instead of an hour and a half. Those days to work. Um, and they'll just have to make it, make it work. And they can spend, they'll have the extra days at the end that they can spend on some of that too. So, my first year, we had COVID, so there was no, we were just done. Um, the next two years, we had one missed day and two missed days. And so, we didn't make up any of that time.
Yeah, what happens if they have more here this morning?
Well, we're kind of out of options. And we'll just, you, you either have to make them up or forgive the, uh, we have to make sure that we cover our thousand and eighty responsibility. So, at some, I mean, at some point, we could consider how many more days you wanna go. Because once you get past the thirty-first, it's difficult to take one or two days at the end and make them productive. When you get to three or four, if you're clear out to June second, the end of that week, then you've got four days to work with. That's a lot more, that's a lot more opportunity to build, to keep structure going than it is to do one or two days.
I'm guessing that there's been discussion amongst superintendents because we're not the only one in this vote. What are other superintendents saying or what is the consensus?
That is a great segue. Okay. So, I'm gonna pass this down to, I have three emails here that have been shared with me. I have three emails that have been shared with me regarding what others are doing. Let's skip the paper, sorry.
That's all right.
And so, you can see that a lot of them are changing the calendar in different ways. We don't have a ton of flexibility, there's two copies there, three pages each.
So, e-learning counts for contract days for teachers but not for students?
E-learning, where does it say that?
I thought that's what one of them did say that.
It's a problem solved teacher contract days. Unresolved problem, lost instruction, cannot count the hours towards minimum ten eighty hours.
Yes, so, it, so like I did for the teachers, the day after we came back from break, that was, they were allowed to work from home that day and have it counted as a contract day. You could do that because they're doing, in that case, they're still doing the teaching. The e-learning puts kids into their classroom with them like it did during COVID. That doesn't, e-learning doesn't count for students, but it could count for teachers because they're working on that day. But as we found, e-learning does not have great participation. And having to take attendance and just get the kids through something when we don't have a real e-learning plan in place, really is not an effective use of time. Use the small sheet here. That's shelved.
So, they're gonna forgive thirteen hours?
Uh, they're gonna forgive two student contact days, so that is, um,
Thirteen hours?
And have teachers do flex PD days. So, um, I don't know that that means that they're gonna forgive the student hours. It just says stu-, two student contact days. But, uh, those two contract days are going to be flex PD. So, they allow the, they allow the teachers to do whatever they want and just clock in it as long as they get it done by June thirty. They just report it in and say that it's done. Then, that's an option if we get too many staff days because to make them stay for five days in a row and to plan effective PD for them, and there's only so much cleaning you can do in your room and giving them the flex time to do that can, could be much more productive.
I don't know if this is feasible or not, but I think about, you know, every, every one of our certified staff writes their professional development goals. And they're very individualized. Would it be possible that they could, that the staff could submit how they would like to make up some of those hours if we give them a certain number to kind of aim for? Maybe they say like, our social studies curriculum team would like to get together, meet either before, after school, or whatever on non-school, uh, non-contract time, and submit that? Or is that gonna be a book meet, bookkeeping nightmare?
Well, that's up to Kendra.
Yeah.
But, but, uh, it, it's definitely a possibility. Teachers already have the ability to turn in for twenty hours
Right.
of curriculum time, writing time, per semester. So, they could spend more time if they wanted to and then provides, you know, evidence of what they worked on. You know, that would, that would be something, but they, they would wanna get past their twenty hours first.
Right, right.
But they could, they could flex that time bef-, you know,
Before and after school.
They could flex it after, through the month of June. So, whatever plans they had for the last, you know, after Memorial Day, they could still have. So, yeah, there's, there's definitely opportunity there.
We would have no idea if it was followed through or not.
Right.
It would be a, there would be something they'd have to turn in with their hours and evidence. The only, the only thing we have to watch out for is that the student days are accounted for first.
Right.
Because the staff days can be, um, for example, parent educators in the past, we've, we've allowed them opportunities to make up days by taking classes or something else. Well, they're wanting to know now what they can do because their January paycheck is gonna be terrible. Um, and February's not gonna be great. But, we have to make sure that they're there at the end to be able to work. So, we're not giving them any makeup opportunity now because we don't know how much time we're gonna make up. So, if we only, if we only make up through the twenty-sixth and say you forgive two days, then, um, they're gonna lose out on two days. So, we need to give them opportunity to make that up. Or, you go through the twenty-sixth and we've already given them nine makeups, now they're not gonna be there from the tenth on, or the fifteenth on. So, um, yeah, that's, I, you know, I know, I know support staff's uncomfortable this month. They'll get the time back, but, uh, we have to make sure that they can look at the end of the year when we still need it.
Is it feasible for us to add time on the day?
Yes, because we use an hours calendar, we can do that.
Just extend the day a little bit?
We could do that. And, so, yeah, we could do that on Wednesday and, and go full days. We could also extend the rest of the days by a half hour or whatever. And we could, we could count back how far we would have to go with that extended day to still get out when it's set when we originally planned. And then, say, any more days that we have to make up, which hopefully the time will be more than five. That would be unique. The most I've ever experienced is twelve. That would be fourteen. So, um, anyway, yeah, we could definitely work backwards from that and, um, and count back half hours. Well, I guess you're gonna do some sort of a survey?
Yes.
So, all you need to know from us is how many student days that we're gonna require?
How many, how many hours?
How many hours require us to make up? And if the answer is we don't know because we don't know what we're gonna end up with, that's fine too. Um, but if you say, but if you say you need to make up all the hours, then that, that makes it a little more.
It doesn't look like any of these three schools are
No.
eliminating any student hours.
No.
Which,
No, they're not.
I guess I was leaning in that direction also. Students need every hour we can have with them.
And when would you have to decide on the President's Day? I think that's an easy to grab here right away.
We, well, we would decide, sorry. Um, the February thirteenth board meeting. Yes, we'll have the public hearing, we'll make the changes to the calendar that we want and then we, and then you approve it. That's what goes into place.
Does that give people enough time that if they have plans of weekend, uh, postpone those or change those?
They see it in the survey that it's a possibility, then I would think they'd realize that.
And there may just be, it, it may not be that we worry about that because absenteeism doesn't decide whether we count today or not. And I, I don't know how many people would have plans for, have plans for that day.
I guess it might be, that'd be a great day to grab, I guess.
I agree. Do the, do the teachers have to agree to that because it's a holiday in their contract?
Yes. And I got a feeling that everybody knows that we're gonna have to make up days someplace.
Right.
That would be a logical assumption to make that there's a day we can pull. And the other thing that we, that we probably wanna consider is that the second semester is ten days longer of student days than the first semester. There are no breaks built in except for President's Day and Easter. And so, the snow days that we get are the breaks that we get plus, I guess, the parent-teacher conference Friday and the Friday, Monday after Easter. So, that's a long time ago with not much break. So, if we're gonna also extend the school day, I wouldn't go past President's Day. That would be my recommendation. I'd take President's Day, but not anymore. So, that there is some break for everybody.
I don't like the idea of that Friday after conferences because to be honest, the teachers are tired.
Absolutely.
They put in a lot of hours that week. And I, I just think that would be asking a lot of them, unless the teachers say, yeah, we'll do it, but that's a lot.
Yeah. So, like Kendra said, we'd have to ask the teachers for President's Day.
You feel like on Easter, you think you need a four-day break or the three-day break, like, even Easter Monday to come back?
I don't know, it depends on what people do for Easter. I, I think it would be a little more travel involved than it would be for President's Day. And again, those are days we would have to talk to the teacher about.
I'd maybe put that one on the radar too maybe.
Given the option, maybe they would choose that day rather than an extra one in late May or June.
Or an early out, that, over Easter break, do half a day instead of a, that probably would,
Well, if they're gonna be here
To be on the front side of it, yeah.
And you're making up time, you're probably gonna want them. But again, that would be a choice that they could make.
I mean, you're giving them a break, it's Friday, so, I guess, it's starting.
Go on Monday, kinda thing. So, so do you wanna consider Friday or not? That's good Friday.
I would say Friday off and Monday back in school.
I'd be interested to know what they think about a half a day on a Saturday instead of making up a full day on a Saturday. I don't know if it's something, I know there's a lot of activities on Saturdays, but I would just be interested to know what the staff thinks about that. You're surveying staff first or you'll go to everybody?
Yes, staff first. Yep, so, send it up, staff first, get all of those kinks worked out, and then, send options out. And the nice part is, um, Kristen's idea of extending the school day, you could even go, um, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and extend the school day and not extend Friday. And, and at this point, you'd be really close to getting everything in. I'm not doing the math, it's, it's got to be close. So, you know, the rest of the options may not matter.
And, um, do we need to consider having a route for buses? Cause with all the snow melting, the roads are gonna be immense.
So, the, the hard part of that is, uh, hard surface-only routes are illegal unless you're within a certain, the pickup spot is within a certain distance of the, uh, family in question and they have the ability to get there. So, if you can't get, if you can't get the buses to the spot, then you can't run. If you've got it within, and Amos and I talked about this, but we need to look up what the actual distance is. But if you're that close and the bus can get there and the kid can get there, then you're fine. If the kid can't get there because of the road condition, then you're out. You can't, if you can't, if you can't pick them up, you can't operate school. So, if, um, and, and it's a good reminder that the people that were asking about, you know, things Thinking town kids were getting put out because country kids couldn't come to school, um, that was on Facebook somewhere. Um, you, everybody's making up the day, so it's not a, you know, nobody's getting left out. You're just making it up later. So. That has to be set up to make sure that there's still access to the bus.
Okay, so do you need a motion tonight?
No mo- no motion, we're just talking about, we're, I just wanted to get an, your thoughts, um.
But I meant as far as student time. Getting to the eleven.
Well, if your expectation is that we're gonna make up all the time, then that's where we're gonna build a calendar. So if that's the direction you want me to go.
I like that because, uh, also, because if they have any more snow days down the road here, they'll.
So, we wanna make up all the missed student hours. And then if we have any more days, once you set a calendar. You're really using up whatever options you have inside what was originally created. So the last day's still May eighteenth, teacher's out on the nineteenth. So, at that point, do we, you know, do we say any other days are made up at the end of the year? That's, you know, that's an option. Which is, as you saw in the emails, that's part of the discussion too. So, um. That would be a consideration to put out, staff, to ask them. And, anything we missed between now and February thirteenth can be added into whatever we create. So, maybe we have three or four more days before that board meeting. You could build that into what you're, you know, into your plan, and then. Whatever's made up gets at the end of the year. So that's, that's a consideration we can throw in. Um, so I've gotta use Wednesday early outs, um, to, to go to the end of the day, and then also have teachers do four thirty on Wednesday. Um, flex time for teachers to make up, and that would only be used if, um, they had actual days to make up.
Right.
Um, extending the school day, use president's day, the Monday after Easter, um, Saturdays possibly. Uh, ma- you know, we, we wanna make up all the missed student hours, and we have to consider what we'll do for anything missed after we reset the calendar. Anything I missed.
So if you reset the calendar, and let's just say we have a bunch more snow days, and you decide, hey, we gotta go Saturdays now, just to. Can you do that, or do you have to reset the calendar again?
You could. Yes, it would be a calendar change. You'd have to approve it again with another public hearing.
Can you approve, could we approve, um, like, this, and if we would get X number more days, then we go to this? Can we approve that all in one, or does it have to be?
Yeah, yeah, you can.
Okay, which would kind of help us out, wouldn't it? Instead of waiting to approve again?
Right. So maybe it's, maybe it's.
Plan A and Plan B.
Well.
Or this and none of them.
You're gonna, you're gonna make them up however it gets done in the calendar. Then any further days will be made up, maybe it's not any further days, maybe it's, you know, snow day one, two, three, four, five. And then we're gonna start going Saturdays. Or something similar. So all of that is, it, I think you'll find out about Saturdays when there's, the staff's gonna respond to that, and the community's gonna respond to that too. Um, you'll find out whether that's really an option or not. Or something that will be supported, so. Okay, I'll, I'll take this stuff, set up, set up a questionnaire for the staff, we'll get that turned around fairly quickly so that I can get a couple of drafts done, and then. Go from there.
I'm kinda anxious to just kinda hear what the staff.
What they think, yeah.
Would like to do.
Yeah.
When you have your. Oh, your meeting, did you talk about some of that?
Labor relations?
Yep.
Yeah, we could have, we could have, um.
In your past meeting, you didn't talk about it necessarily, or?
They brought it up at the last meeting we just had last week.
Yep.
Um, it was very popular. Um, but, uh, uh, but yeah.
What was their thoughts then?
They, well, they didn't really have any ideas other than, what are we gonna do? They just, they just wanted to know. So I told them we would talk about it tonight, give them something that you want for a while, take their feedback. So, that labor relations committee could meet after the survey results come back in, go through and help develop drafts. That's a great idea.
And what about our staff that? Like, our cooks, our.
So the calendar, as long as you're making up hours, um, the, the custodians, it doesn't matter.
Right.
Um, the, uh, uh, parent educators will work the extra hours, so they'll make up their time.
Okay.
Um, secretaries, same thing.
Right.
Um, the cooks, we would have to give them credit for some trainings.
Okay.
That we don't. Um, some trainings they do in the summer. They also have the option to work the summer food program.
Oh, right.
Um, and get hours that way.
Okay.
All right, anything else that you need?
Nope.
Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you. Move on to item C, mid-year financial update?
All right, so, uh, on here. Thank you, Mrs. Shuler. Um. Okay, so you can see that on, and I can't drag it over there. You can see it on your, if you click on it on the agenda. I'll get it over here so that Sandra can square that up from thirty feet away. Sorry.
What's that?
Do you have it on your? Do you have it pulled up there so you can see it? So I'll just pull it up here in case anybody wants it there. So, this is, um. This sheet details, uh, revenues coming in to create the, um, annual authority, then the maximum authority. It, uh, includes, uh, your projected expenditures for the year. And then, uh, we talk about how much of that authority we've spent six months through the year, so you have an idea of where we're gonna end up. So, something that I wanna bring up to you, uh, well, first, uh, the first four columns are actual years that have been closed out and confirmed, they're ready to go. Um, the FY twenty-two is still estimated because it hasn't been officially closed. And FY twenty-three is also estimated because we're in the current year, so we have, um, these numbers are not official. Uh, but they're, they're what we know right now. So in the yellow, you can see our maximum district cost. And you can see that that has gone up and down and fluctuated throughout the years. Um, sometimes we get the, um, uh, budget guarantees, so that gives us some, some extra. Um, and that's based on enrollment. Uh, sometimes our special education, um, goes up and down, our dropout prevention has gone up and down. So, there's, um, several different things that affect that. If you look at the next yellow line, that's the maximum authorized budget, and if you notice, we've had a pretty big jump from the first year. As we come over now to, uh, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, and that's ESER. Now, after twenty, um, after twenty-four, next year, that money goes away. So your maximum budget is gonna be in this neighborhood again next year, but then the year after that, it's gonna be five or six hundred thousand dollars less than that, because the ESER funding goes away. Our expenditures, you can see here, they have gone up, uh, they went up, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand or so, then three hundred thousand. Um, or pardon me, four hundred and eighty thousand, um, and then another six hundred and fifty thousand. Again, that's ESER, that's positions. Um, and just increased expenditures too. So our unspent authorized budget, you can see that it's progressed and gotten higher and higher as we've gone through time, which is very good. Uh, we also talked about the need to spend it down. Um, declining enrollment is gonna do that for us. But we've also made some purchases that we maybe wouldn't have made, um, to help spend that down as well, one-time purchases. But you can see that our unspent authorized budget from last year to this year goes down, um, four hundred and twenty-two thousand. And in the last column, if you go down about four more spaces, there's a red negative four hundred and twenty-two thousand number there to, to account for that. Now, there's a couple of things that are gonna not, not make that. Happen possible. The first is that we've had several positions that haven't been filled for much of, if not all of the year. So that is budgeted expense that we are not paying out. That's significant. Um, we also conservatively budget, so we budget for more expenses than we plan to spend. We're getting closer to that. Next year, it's gonna be about the same expenditures to, um, annual authority, which doesn't include your unspent balance. But we're gonna have to look at, um, as the finance committee learned this past week, um, in a couple of years, we're gonna have to look at a correction. Because, as we've talked about for the last two years, ESER money's gonna go away. Those expenses that were being paid by ESER are gonna come back on the general fund, so you're gonna lose the revenue and keep the expenditures. So then you're gonna, that's gonna create a situation. But if that, if that four hundred and twenty-two thousand and a negative isn't as big as that, um, when we get to the end of the year. Then it's not gonna make the correction have to be as bad later on. So, um. We'll see what happens there. Um, and at the very bottom, you can see, um, our maximum authority, which is the total of everything, thirteen million nine ninety-eight. Um, we have only spent twenty-nine point nine percent of our maximum authority. You don't wanna get anywhere close to that number. Right? Cause that's every dollar you have, and that would be bad. Um, but of our annual authority, we've spent forty-four point three-five percent. So through six months, we haven't spent half of our, um, annual authority. That's a good sign. Um, and also with positions we haven't paid and other things, that, that's good. Compared to the year before, that's up slightly, but again, not at fifty percent. To figure that number, um, you take what's spent through December, through the end of December, and then there's a number that Kendra figures for the summer, for salaries and other things, uh, that are prorated. They, they happen in the next fiscal year because it's after July one, but they get billed back to this year because it's teacher pay, um, for the current contracts, so that gets billed back to this year. Um, anything else that I'm missing there, Kendra?
No, that number is just the accrual for, um, July and August paychecks for the, um, teachers that gets accrued back into this fiscal year.
So that is, uh, the mid-year update. All right, any comments, questions? As we discussed in the finance meeting, this is great information to have, so we can plan, start planning a year, two, three before. So that we don't have to make drastic changes later. So, great information. All right, moving on to new business. Mid-year review, consider changes to return to learn.
Um, there are no changes proposed to the return to learn plan, uh, but we do have to continue to approve it every six months as we receive the ESER finances, or ESER revenue, sorry. Uh, so I would recommend approving the plan as presented.
I'd move to approve the mid-year, or move to approve the. Changes to return to learn plan. Move to all changes.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the mid-year review of the return to learn plan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carried. Consider approval of HVAC service plan renewal.
So Climate Systems has been our contracted service provider for several years now, and they were involved in the installation of the new HVAC system. Um, their, things are great with them, so I have no reason not to continue with them. Uh, the proposal was attached, we only do this year by year, so there were three years in the plan, but we only do it year by year. Uh, so the, uh, they come twice a year to switch out filters and do any, um, low-level maintenance. Uh, so for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, that would be in the amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars, I recommend approving the agreement.
Any questions or comments? If not, would there be a motion?
You've been happy with their, with their service?
Yeah, yeah. And it's a, and it's a good save, time save for custodial staff to not have to replace all the filters. There's, uh, each one has three to six filters in it, and that's every stop around that. So it, it would definitely take them a lot longer, and climate comes in in a day and whoops, uh, so.
This is before with our, um, equipment breakdown insurance too. This, the, the invoices are.
I move to approve the HVAC service plan with climate service.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the HVAC service plan as presented with Climate Systems. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same. Motion carried. Consider approval of van purchase.
So Amos has come to me requesting a, a twelve-passenger van. These vehicles were recently approved by the Department of Education for transportation purposes. They're very hard to find because everybody's buying them up. Um, you can only use used ones for a certain timeframe, um, and to buy a new expedition would be twenty to thirty thou- twenty to thirty thousand dollars more. Um, we pay for this out of, uh, PEPAL, and, uh, we have, we have the money in PEPAL to do projects that we had planned on. And, um, we do budget fifty thousand dollars a year out of PEPAL for transportation needs, besides the bus leases, which are also paid out. So, um, it would be nice to have this flexibility to, uh, get kits where that we need to go, and we need another vehicle to get, um, a student to a placement. So, um, I recommend approving the purchase of the two thou- two thousand twenty-passenger van from Mulder, Mulder Auto Tire and Mood in the amount of forty-eight thousand dollars.
So, so part of this increase is like with the, uh, Sheldon and the soccer program, was that some of that, or?
Well, there's, that's some of it, and then, uh, a lot of times they take a bus anyway. Uh, by the time you send track, that may only use an expedition plus two golf teams going to separate places. There go all three of the expeditions, and then a bus going somewhere, and another bus. So, more of it right now is about needing another vehicle to transport students. We have a couple of vehicles that we could do that with that are sitting out there, but they're not, um, in service for students. They're only in service for adults. Um, so, we aren't able to use them for student transport.
Any other questions?
So our total amount we can spend on transportation out of that fund that we allocate is fifty thousand?
That's what we, that's what we put in yearly for a new vehicle, if we have to purchase a new vehicle.
So we don't see a need for anything else.
Not, not before next year, no.
Okay.
And, um. Uh, they haven't gotten a new support vehicle for several years, um, since I've been here. We, we might've gotten the one expedition, but I think that was the year before I got here too.
Yeah, that's right.
So, um, yeah.
There's, there's more funds available, we had just budgeted the fifty. There's, there's more funds available, we had just budgeted the fifty thousand.
For vehicles. I make a motion to approve this purchase of this van.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the van purchase, the amount of forty-eight thousand dollars from Mulder Auto Tire. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same. Motion carried. Consider continuation of board-approved PEPAL.
So yearly, as we start the certified budget process, the board has to decide whether or not to approve continuing the board, the, the PEPAL levy that you can approve, which is thirty-four cents. And I recommend that you approve continuing the the PEPAL levy of thirty-four cents.
I move to approve the board-approved PEPAL.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the board-approved PEPAL, thirty-four cents. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same. Motion carried. Item E, establish the percent of income surtax on the voted PEPAL.
So, when the voted PEPAL was originally approved, the income surtax was set at four percent. It then went up to six percent a few years later, and then my first year when we did the certified budget, we brought it back down to four percent. With state supplemental aid, the governor has budgeted two point five percent. That is going to force property taxes up. So, in order to offset that, I think it would be prudent to put the income surtax back to six percent to help offset the increase so that it's not all on property taxes. If you remember back to the presentation earlier in the year about where the levies come from, PEPAL, the PEPAL levy is, the voted PEPAL levy isn't the full sixty, sixty-three cents on property taxes because of the income surtax. Takes some of that away, so that number is always lower. So again, it's not the voted PEPAL that's going up, it's the general fund levy of the property tax that's going up. But, we can give some relief by increasing the income surtax, so it doesn't, that increases all property taxes. So that's my recommendation for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four certified budget.
And just to clarify, it has been at six percent before?
Yes. It was originally four, it was moved up to six. The board, in my first year, moved it back to four. It's been there for four years, or three years.
Six is the most it can be, correct?
No. Ten, I, I think it would go at least to ten. Can it go higher than ten?
I don't, I think ten is enough.
I, yeah.
I'm not positive.
But yes, it can go higher than that.
It can go higher, I guess as well, all right.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve raising the income surt- uh, voted PEPAL, so the income sur- surtax to six percent from four percent for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to raise the income surtax on the voted PEPAL from four percent to six percent for twenty twenty-four. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same. Motion carried. All right, moving to item F, consider approval of open enrollment in requests.
We have a kindergarten and a third grade student coming in from Esserville Lincoln Central. That is a typo. I definitely recommend approving the request. And we don't really have the option not to.
Aren't they commuting in that part?
Yes. And mom is on the list to approve for new positions, so she's also working for us.
I'll make a motion, or I'll make a motion to approve the open enrollment.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the open enrollment in request as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same. Motion carried.
That's the, that's the door that goes outside from the northwest corner of the gym. We have to reset that several times again.
All right, item G. Consider approval of resignations.
So we'll just address the one Keith Swenson varsity softball coach after this upcoming season. And I recommend approving that request, and please name him when you make the motion.
I make a motion to approve the resignation of Keith Swenson as presented.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the resignation of Keith Swenson varsity softball coach following the summer twenty twenty-three season as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same. Motion carried. Item H, consider approval of new contracts.
And we're very excited. Uh, that Caitlin Espy has taken on the seventh grade girls' basketball coaching position. Ryan Wiersma is going to be mentoring Tyler Zymon, our new high school math teacher. Hannah Nielsen is, was hired as a high school parent educator, and her background check did come through, and so she is ready to go. Norma Lutgens in food service, and we had another person call about possibly working in the kitchen, so that is a huge relief for them, they are incredibly short. So I have not heard on her background check, so, so we can do that pending background check. And we'll not address the last one. So, I recommend approving the new contracts or work agreements, and please mention names when you make your motion.
I make a motion, we accept or approve the contracts for Caitlin Espy, Ryan Wiersma, Hannah Nielsen, Norma Lutgens, and Mike McCarty.
No. Leave the last one off.
I didn't mean that.
So now we have to... Okay. She doesn't have to rescind and come back.
You either rescind, or it could, or it could die for a lack of second.
Okay.
Either way you wanna do it. Would you wanna restate the motion?
Yes, I would like to restate that motion. I would like to make a motion to approve Caitlin Espy, Ryan Wiersma, Hannah Nielsen, and Norma Lutgens for the positions that are stated.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Caitlin Espy, Ryan Wiersma, Hannah Nielsen, and Norma Lutgens pending background check as stated for the new contracts. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same. Motion carried. All right, additional items, next meetings?
Just a reminder that we call a special meeting in early April for the budget hearing, usually right away if we can, so we have plenty of time to get that submitted, so, beyond much for that.
All right. Number nine, talking points.
The maximum income surtax is twenty percent.
Thank you.
I thought the presentation from Mrs. Shuler really gave us a good overview of all of our grade levels and social studies and history. Looks like we're doing some really cool things, so.
Any other talking points?
Yeah, I'd written down, you know, we're flat with our open enrollment, which is good, I think that's trending back to from our negative last year.
The mid-year financial report shows us in a strong position, but looking ahead with declining enrollment, we've gotta be aware of that, so good to go over those things and plan for them years ahead of time.
Unaccommodating, they say.
Yep, anything else? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carried, we are adjourned, thank you very much.